...for your Downers Grove Township Court, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for Downers Grove Township 99 led by Ron Mutuno as they present both the colors and lead us in the political meetings.
Color of attention? Color of advance? Color of please post the colors.
I put the reasons to apply of New York State's law into a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, and his will is the liberty of the United States of America.
You can be seated. When you checked in, you were informed that the annual financial statement of the township supervisor and copy of documents, the agenda item, was available for pickup. The agenda and annual financial statement has been posted in the log here at Ashia on There are four rules that go on the annual town meeting. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the requirements of state law and Robert's rules of order. Any fifteen or more registered voters in the township may bring a specific request to the township clerk by March 1st prior to the annual town meeting to add an agenda item to the agenda for the town meeting. By law, the proposed agenda item must be relevant to the powers granted to electors under the township code. If an item had been added to the agenda, copies would have been available for distribution to those in attendance at the annual town meeting. This year, no requests was filed with my office. Each speaker will have a toll of three minutes to conduct themselves to the subject of the meeting. Voting will be by voice vote. If the vote is in doubt, voters will be asked to stand to vote A and then stand to vote B. The sergeant-at-arms to be appointed will take the count of the votes. At this time, I would like to introduce the township elected officials. Supervisor Mark Tolman, Highway Commissioner Andy Anderson, Assessor Greg Bolz, Trustee Arda Nen, Trustee Abby Ferguson, Trustee Karen Kelly, and Trustee David Vandermaat, and our township attorney Al Malangi. The legal notice is a formal legal notice for the annual town meeting. It contains the full agenda and has been published in newspapers north and south, on the township website, and at the township building, and here at Ashia on Main Goods. At this time, I request a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice. Could I get a motion? State your name clearly.
Michael Hahn.
Okay. A second?
A second.
Mark Baker? Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The reading of the legal notice is waived, okay. Roll call of electors. When you checked in as a registered voter, you received a card as admission and confirmation that you're registered to vote in Downers Grove Township. Okay. Is Susan Gilbert, the poll?
Have me too.
Okay. All right. We have a total count of seventy-two in attendance. I request a motion to waive the reading of the roll call of electors. Could I have a motion?
Tell them.
State your name.
Laura Hoise.
Laura Hoise, okay. A second?
Al Sagan.
Michael Hahn. Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Yeah, if you want to know why you want to skip it.
Why you want to waive the reading of the financial statement? Because it was presented in the packet, so you have that information.
Okay.
Okay. Is there, okay, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Okay. I'm going to call for the election of the moderator by nomination. Are there any nominations for moderator? Attorney Al Malangi nominates Gary Grasso as moderator. Second?
Al Sagan.
Michael Hahn.
Michael Hahn, okay, so we have a second. Are there any other nominations for moderator? Okay, none heard, all right, okay. All in favor of Gary Grasso as moderator, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, so we will swear in. Gary Grasso as moderator. Okay, so, raise your hand. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of moderator at the Downers Grove Township Annual Town Meeting to help you out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm double vaccinated, so if you don't mind, I look cold and so in order to be heard, does anybody attempt to be taking my mask off? Oh, no, okay, thank you. Seems like, looking at the crowd, apropos to say, if anybody printed out directions to get here tonight, you're in the right spot. I want to appoint, first of all, Al Malangi as our parlaying. I also am going to make two appointments for Sergeant-at-arms Jack Novak and Michael Hahn. Where's Jeff? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to get a motion to waive the reading of the April 9th, 2019 minutes as copies are included in your packet. Can I get a motion? Just your name?
Anthony Kay.
Should I say again?
Anthony Kay.
Thank you, Anthony. Do I have a second? Name? Okay. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'd like a motion to approve the twenty, excuse me, 2019 minutes as presented. Motion?
I want to approve.
Okay, Mike?
I want.
Do we have a second? Anthony again, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the 2019 minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the financial statement. It's captioned, "Certificate of Accounts, fiscal year March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2022", as copy provided in your packet. Can I get a motion?
I'll give you some.
Mike?
Second.
Two, one, sit next to each other.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir?
Yeah, we just have an overall highlights of the financials for the township. I mean, it is the taxpayers, you know, a hundred fifty thousand voters, so we have that overview of this, we did, and that's not a detail, but just a quick overview. For someone who like me.
I understand, thank you for your comment, that the motion is to waive it. And so, we'll see if the motion fails, then maybe it'll be an appropriate reading or something. So, any other discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to be opposed, just a record? Okay, how many are opposed? Okay, I see less than ten hands, I would say the ayes still have it. Thank you. Next, I ask for passage of a resolution authorizing specific powers to the town board. Copy of the resolution is included in your packet. Can I get a motion for passage of the resolution authorizing specific powers to the town board? Anthony?
I'll tell it.
David?
I'll tell it.
Second. Any discussion? Yes?
My name is Carol Sol.
Carol?
And we seem to be rushing through all the businesses as if it doesn't matter. Township government spends a significant amount of money and has significant powers to authorities. I'd like to request that we read through the authorizing, the resolution authorizing powers to the town board, so we at least know when we are giving them the rights to do in the future.
There's a motion to waive the, and just pass it, but if there is sufficient support for that, that can be done. So far, Carol, I think you're the only one. Okay, any, any other comments on this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? How many? One, two, three, Carol, four, five? Okay, the ayes have it, thank you.
Did I make a motion? Did I make a motion?
No, you, you commented.
Okay.
And you, you could make a motion, but there was no second?
I understand that there was no second. I thought I was making a motion, which you basically rejected. But that's okay, because nobody here prefers what the council wants.
You were, I, I asked for a comment. If you were then making a motion, I think you'd see that, by the way, there's only four or five people in support, and you still lose that motion. But there was no second, okay? All right. Per the CDC, to hold the annual meeting tonight, it applied with their recommendations, we were advised to provide for social distancing, fifty percent of the mood capacity, masks and hand sanitizer being available. In addition, the CDC recommends the meeting be as short as reasonably possible, which is a part why we are going through things, but this is typical, how we can we do things traditionally anyhow.
I know.
But, so it's not out of the, out of the norm. In addition, the CDC recommends the meeting be as short as reasonable, therefore, we're asking for a motion to waive number thirteen, the reports by elected officials this year. They may be submitted in writing to be included as permanent record, thereby eliminating the health risk to participants who have been most gracious to attend today. Is there a motion to waive reports by elected officials?
I'd like to make a motion.
Mike, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mark?
I would like to give my report. So far, you have quoted on three separate occasions, the waived notice, because it was presented in the packet, as a reason to waive. You moved the waived minutes, because copies are in the packet, and you've moved the waived the financial statement as applied to the packet. My very brief, sub-nine-minute discussion of the accomplishments of the township supervisor office has not been published in the packet. I think the people that came out here tonight deserve the opportunity to hear that report. Thank you for letting me comment.
So we have a motion, a second, yes. I want to comment.
You have three minutes, right? City Council, yeah.
All of the town's citizens here, how many people here pay taxes in the township? Please raise your hand.
Excuse me, excuse me, what did you say your name was?
Tom Postle, all of us here, your name?
How many people pay taxes? Yeah, every, everybody, right?
Everybody here pays taxes. Don't you want to know where your money goes? How it was spent? What was accomplished? How these hardworking men and women on the township have, is your money, where did it come? I think it's worth while here, right? So I ask for you, if you want to support this, let's hear from the full board of what happened over the last year on township. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment? Yes?
I'm not including. And I want to comment that this board is very transparent. You can go to any of them and ask where your money's going. I have dealt with the assessor, very honest, helped me with my questions, the highway department, he has, their department has plowed before Darian, I live on a connecting street, I can't say enough about the brush pickup, all the services they provide, the senior citizens, the food pantry. I, I think this board is an awesome board, and to question it, all you need to do is go ask them. Don't believe chitter and media hype, just go ask them.
Anyone else would like to make a comment? Next, please. State your name clearly, we have a formal report.
Janet Wiegand.
Thank you, Janet.
I'd like to echo the request that the reports be presented. This is a formal opportunity for the board members to explain and to actually chew their own horns if they want to, with respect to the accomplishments of the, of the year, and I think this is the appropriate time and place to do it, and it should be that the officials are expected to make a report rather than have the citizens try to find them in the hallways on their phone line. This is, this is the appropriate time and the appropriate place for a formal report.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else?
Kathy Tolman. I also feel that they should be giving their report for the transparency of their offices and what they do here in the township. I feel that there's a lot to be said, that people don't know what's going on in the township, and a lot has happened with the township that's new and exciting and should be presented so that people can hear that. People took time on their evenings to come here to hear these, this report. It was posted that we were going to hear the report, and now that's being taken away. Thank you.
Mary Wansky.
Mary.
I feel that we shouldn't have to take time out of our day to come and visit each of these individuals to have them, you know, show their transparency to us. We have time right now so that all of them can show us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kathy Rager. I not only work for the township, but I also am a citizen here and a resident of the community of the township. I enjoy serving the residents of this community, and I think that they deserve to hear from their leaders here. This is the appropriate time to do it. We have exciting things that have happened. We missed a year, we didn't have an annual meeting last year, so a lot of us, you know, we, they don't know what's going on. I think they need to understand this. There's exciting things that are going into the future with the new election, there's also exciting things that have happened in the past. So I really think that we need to do this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to add that I'd be done by now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, the motion, if granted, if approved, would waive the elected official reports. So if you're voting yes, you're voting not to have an elected official report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it's probably close enough to get, stand up if this is counted, just to be sure. Sergeant-at-arms, please count.
Who do we count?
Okay, so these are, wait, 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 these are the no votes. These are the no votes, count those. All right.
I'd like the record to note that the entire board of trustees is standing opposition to this motion.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, fifteen, okay, please sit down. All that are in favor of not having the elected officials report tonight, please stand. Forty-nine. Okay, forty-nine, the ayes have it, which means we're not going to have reports by elected officials at this juncture in the meeting. To remind all of you that there is an open forum public comment section tonight, which should afford you an opportunity.
Well, I do allow to go longer than three minutes.
I certainly will give you some leas.
Thank you. And I would like to say now, it's my intention to give my report during public comments.
Trying to do what I can, okay? Okay. Next, I ask the clerk to read the resolution authorizing the next annual meeting.
Okay, Downers Grove Township Resolution, Annual Town Meeting. Today's date is April 13th, 2021. Whereas, Illinois law requires that the electors at the annual town meeting fix the hour at which township meetings shall be held pursuant to sixty ILCS 1/30-5, Section D. Whenever the date designated in subsection D conflicts with the celebration of Passover, the township board may postpone the annual town meeting to the first Tuesday following the last day of Passover. Therefore, be it resolved that the next annual town meeting shall begin at 7:30 o'clock PM on the second Tuesday of April, which will be April 12th, 2022.
Thank you, Mary. Now, that takes us to open forum or public comment. Traditionally, we would have three minutes, but.
Did we pass that resolution?
Sorry?
Did we pass that resolution?
Oh, I, maybe we have not, thank you very much, okay? Can I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the next annual town meeting for April 12th, 2022 at 7:30?
I will move to do so.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second?
Scott Melrose.
Have a name? All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for letting me comment. Now where you're at, open forum, public comment. Would anyone like to make a public comment?
May I be allowed to use the podium?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Fully Pfizer to debate here. This won't take long. Spent two years, my name is Mark Tolman, I'm the township supervisor. Spent two years since I've recorded out on township activities in the supervisor's office. Despite the lockdowns and a few setbacks, the supervisor's office worked hard to turn elevens into lemonade. I'm going to cover four main areas of our accomplishments. First, the most boring is budget finance. Over a five-year period, we froze our property tax levy for the general fund. Over that same five-year timeframe, we reduced staffing from twelve employees to five, and added job responsibility and productivity and didn't miss a beat. Those personnel savings allowed us to fully fund our pension and our pension obligations to all retired employees from every department. It also allowed us to add funding to the capital project fund, begin updating the township for the future. More on that in a moment. Environmentally, our green energy program resulted in the Environmental Protection Agency recently making Downers Grove Township a green energy partner. Just got our signs today, as a matter of fact. That's a first for us. We're also current, we're currently working on a project I outlined at the 2019 meeting, a rooftop, rooftop-mounted PV solar array. This project is scheduled this year in the state infrastructure budget as a grant. We've completed the first two rounds of paperwork and are close to being able to bid on this project. Not only will it pay for itself, it will additionally generate more than $200,000 in utility savings for taxpayers over the next 25 years. After years of study and planning at the 2019 meeting, you recall, I outlined an ambitious project to finally build the missing piece of township services, a multi-purpose township senior center. That project is now complete, beyond our expectations. We came in under budget and ahead of schedule with an energy-type building and a permeable paper parking lot with huge built-in store-oar storage. Along the way, we forged new long-term relationships with several nonprofits to bring their volunteer services closer to our residents. Friends for Downers Grove Township Seniors is our main nonprofit foundation supporting our services. They worked hard the last year and a half raising money to outfit the new building and have raised over $33,000 in that effort. The Fish Food Pantry has emerged from our basement to a new ground-level facility and has more than tripled the number of families in need that they serve. At the same time, they went through a changing in the guard from the original driving force volunteers of almost half a century of service to a group of dedicated new volunteers that have brought new energy, new ideas, and drive to their mission. It's a great partnership that'll grow moving forward. After supporting DuPage Senior Citizen Council's mission to our senior citizens for several years, in 2020, we started working directly with them to distribute frozen meals packs to our seniors age sixty and over. We delivered over 10,000 meals in 2020. Much thanks to Kathy Rager and Susan Mistrada for coordinating with DuPage Senior Citizens and being out there in the street handing out those packs. And I'm proud to announce that that program will begin again starting Thursday, April 29th, and will continue through September of this year. Another component of our direct cooperation is Meals on Wheels will now be staged for delivery out of the new township center. They make deliveries to over 400 homebound residents in DuPage, the Downers Grove Township. A third component, DuPage Senior Citizens will providing, be providing lunchtime opportunities to five days a week procedures who can travel to the township center. These programs will commence when the state allows. Garden Works LLC is a nonprofit that will be installing raised vegetable gardens on the new back patio area, allowing us to start a gardening club for all residents growing fresh vegetables for the fish pantry. AARP, George Goodman is here with us tonight. Will start up again this fall with driver's ed classes at a car care checkup clinic. Both were hugely popular in the past and were halted due to COVID. We have more programs in mind to cooperate with the AARP on. Consolidated High School District 99 will be rolling out a very ambitious and innovative program to use our grounds as a STEM field lab for environmental studies. Students will be having hands-on learning about native plantings and their benefit for environment, creating a new home for bees, birds, and butterflies. Those are just a few of our new partnerships, there's more partnerships to come. COVID did cause setbacks, but the supervisor's office stayed open and engaged all year. Dialer ride, benefits access, passports, all continued via appointments. Our youth services due to COVID took a hit. We lost some schools because of confusion caused by remote learning. I would like to single out Jill Braun, our youth services employee, for her dedication and ingenuity in translating the state-required learning materials into a website and online resource modules with teaching assistance that covers the state-required social and emotional learning standards for youth age thirteen and under. We continue to help children age thirteen and under build a base of resilience, common sense, sympathy, and empathy. That work will continue, and we'll get back those schools that fell by the wayside, back on board, moving forward. That work will continue, and we'll get back those schools that fell by the wayside, back on board moving forward. Big thing, our software provider died during COVID. We had to change and upgrade our, our accounting system completely last year when he succumbed to COVID. I would like to single out our, the Township Executive Administrator, Chris West, for her dedication in learning a completely new software system, basically on a minute's notice, and coordinating with several other townships to drive down the pricing of that system for taxpayers. We received CARES funding in the fall and winter, and we distributed over $120,000 to more than a dozen nonprofits in our township that were rocked with unexpected COVID expenses. Passing those funds down the line kept them on their feet, kept them on their mission, and helped them survive so they could continue helping our township residents. CARES Act funding also went to upgrade and upgrade the food pantry hardware and paid for personal protection items. Our senior services took their hits too, as we could no longer hold our popular Senior Survival Series meetings during COVID. It seemed like health and assistance, help and assistance for those most in need brought to a halt, disappeared in many levels of government, but not for us. The office of the Supervisor stayed open and engaged with the public the entire time. We pivoted to providing information for residents, ranging from how to burn through seemingly endless barriers to get assistance, to intaking and referring a record number of assistance cases to the proper authorities that could help them. For example, our general assistance person, Gary Ostrowski, processed over 1,700 low-income home energy assistance program cases before sending them to the county for payment. Do the math, two-hundred-and-twenty workdays, over seventeen hundred applications he interviewed, processed, and forwarded to the county to help them to pay bills that they didn't have money for. Unincorporated residents got a five-year extension on coherent, recently-royalized refuse service with minimal price increases. The refuse contract, which Jack Novak helped chair, that committee that originally started it, was a first for the township, and it saved, it has saved households hundreds of dollars each and every year. Public service is not based on timing or rushing through a meeting. It's based on solving problems and taking care as best we can of those in need of that care. Townships are the closest level of government to the people, so there's never a wrong time to do the right thing and provide that care. You can find out much more about our partnerships and purposes on our website, our Facebook page, or our Nextdoor page, which were simple trifle brochures. What we've done the past two years is not to make government bigger, but to make serving the people a bigger part of what we do. This is the part my wife's not going to like. When I first agreed to run for township office, it was with the tacit agreement that my boss, Mrs. T., decides when my time in office is done. I'm sorry to disappoint her, because she still knows I have work to do, and she knows why I won't be able to finish what I started. So I will continue to serve until May fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and then a new supervisor will be sworn in. I will leave work unfinished. Ultimately, the people of Downers Grove Township, all of the people, young and old, rich and poor, are the source of the power and legitimacy and the purpose of our township government. That's a healthy perspective for any elected official and public employee to keep in mind. Thank you for your time and consideration.
It is nine and a half minutes, and he kept his word. Uh, anyone else? Is still public comment time? You can come up to the microphone as you wish, sir. Now, first of all, before you start, is there any of you else? I don't believe so, but just wanted to make the offer, okay? Laura's yours, sir.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Jay Wayne, and I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Well, um, we, we can't do this.
Oh, 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 apologies.
That's all right, we, we need, we need to let anybody who wishes to speak tonight, uh, speak, uh, up to at least three minutes, not nine, but, uh, I'll be fudge. Okay?
Okay.
So anybody else would like to speak? Ladies first?
In two thousand and eighteen, Governor Bruce...
Name, we need name.
Oh, sorry, Mary Ramansky. In two thousand and eighteen, Governor Bruce Rauner signed an executive order eliminating nepotism in state government, and I urge the township to follow Governor Rauner's example. Thank you.
Next?
I have a long speech. Uh, Tompkins, City of Marion Oldham. I've served as council for five years, and I always have a surprise that I haven't learned anything, and today I learned something new, that you can skip reports from elected officials. Uh, we have a mayor, we have a city administrator, we have a police chief. At every meeting that we have, they, they speak, you know, and things like what happened to the police in Minnesota. You always want to hear from your police officer, what's going on, what happens to businesses that are going? I'm disappointed that, uh, you know, we skipped all these democracies that happened, that we skipped the reports from the good work the guys on the township did. And, uh, you know, for the Boy Scouts to back, I'm an Eagle Scout, is an example, which you really don't want to do. And, uh, secondly, as a candidate for Hightown Township, I know a lot of stuff that was going on in the township, but one of the things I recommend, uh, to the new township board to take a look at is ethics. Ethics is important, I'm, I'm there as city council, I got signed a contract that says I don't have any companies that work with, uh, you know, the city. I don't know this, I don't know that. So one of the things I recommend to you, uh, new township board, congratulations as well, that you look at, uh, bringing ethics reform, bringing a requirement, I know that serves, is required to sign, be ethical either, such as a married family member, so maybe you're required to have proper training to be a council member. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
My name is still Carol Saul.
Carol.
Hi. I have attended nearly every township meeting for the last twelve years, but I illness, worked out of town, and had a little bit of trouble during the COVID year. Thank you, Mark, for finding a way to make your remarks tonight, because even though I attend regularly, unlike most of the people here, I've never seen at a township meeting. I learned things tonight that I didn't know.
I've been here, I've been here.
She's there.
Okay, wait, please don't interrupt, let her speak.
Other than people coming in wanting something, I attend township meetings regularly, unlike, almost, I, I, I can't think of anyone else who attends regularly who's not essentially paid to be there. And I want to say, thank you, Mark, for finding a way to make your comments tonight, because even though I attend regularly, I learned things I did not know have been accomplished in the last two years, because there was no meeting last year. So thank you for that, and I hope you all learn some things about what the township has done too.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else? Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that, um, all this information is on the website, and us as citizens, you should be going on the website to find out what your township is doing. And speaking of ethics, um, it would be good if opponents got correct information instead of passing misinformation to the public, which you could actually find out, I know what you were talking about, and if you live in a glass house, you should not be throwing stones. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will say as moderator that several of the elected officials tonight told me before, um, the meeting that because of the COVID situation and out of respect of keeping this meeting short, as recommended by the CDC and also the DuPage County Board of Health and the State Board of Health, it was their decision, and they felt it was a better discretion that they not speak tonight. So, we live in, and we live in a country that allows for differences of opinion. Just don't assume that if people did not want to speak tonight, it was for reasons that you're assuming as opposed to what your real reasons were. So thank you for attending yet another, what is it, a hundred, what, a hundred and seventy? Hundred and seventy-first, think about that, Hundred and Seventy-first Township meeting. There's a lot of history behind us, thank you for doing this. We'll be probably here next year, and please come out and continue to participate. I'll take one exception to what Mark Tomlin said tonight. And by the way, as the mayor of Beridge, I want to thank him for his service to the township, to my village, to me. But government is also very local at the municipal level, especially when you're a small-town mayor and you get calls, uh, all, all the time, so I think maybe we're on the same par. So thank you again on closing public, uh, comment, uh, and thank you for attending and participating in your precious democracy. Good night.